I felt the survey to all residents in regard to the 10 items that the council have come up with and asked for other input. The historical society question is on that survey. So if you want, I'll just put this letter aside until we get the results of that survey to see where that
Falls.
Falls in terms of priorities that people see for the community. That's okay.
Everybody okay with that?
Yep.
Next is Orland, please call on 917-2021 and also Aurora, please call on 926-21. Questions on those? I'll settle those, David. Item six is ordinances considered introduced. We have a bunch of second readings and we'll have public hearings on those later on. First is a second reading for the amendment to appendix B, council rules to update membership on the economic development committee. Next is a second reading for the amendment to appendix P, remote participation policy. Provide definition of boards and committees covered. We have a second reading on the amendment to chapter eight offenses and miscellaneous article two safe zones to update the safe zone locations. And our final second reading is the amendment to chapter four boards, to chapter four boards, commissions and special offices to amend meeting requirements for the planning board. As I say, we will have a public hearing on all of those later on in the meeting, so. Any questions on any of those? Item seven, discussion items. We have several tonight. First is the regulatory review committee update. Yes, we met earlier and discussed the social media policy and made a recommendation to have the council adopt the policy superform. Questions?
That policy would be introduced for a first reading at your next council meeting.
Next item is the Bucksport Police Department Strategic Plan Review. Quite an in-depth plan you got there, Chief. Looks like you.
I'd give DC Winchester all the credit. That happened when the change program, remember, not including all that. So basically, when we reconfigured the public safety departments, I drafted the plan for a three-year plan just to kind of give us an avenue on where we were headed, some goals, some objectives to work towards. And I used a plan from an agency that was similar in size and I think you guys all have a copy of it. I can go through it or if you guys have any questions, be happy to answer.
Any questions? You guys happy where you are right now?
Yeah, we were discussing it recently and we're surprised two years in how far we've come and rather than things that we were able to check off, including the big ones like the K-9 and the adding a new sergeant, a new patrolman. So yeah, we're all very happy.
You're doing a good job.
Can you just give a status update on the new hires and the K-9, just where we're at? Have they all done their training, the new hires?
So both new hires have completed their field training programs. They're on their shifts that they've chosen to work. I have a PT test for them next Wednesday. They have to pass the PT test more than a certain time before the academy. And we're anticipating at least one of them attending the academy in January, but that's still kind of up in the air, but at least one. The K-9 reached out to the Stanton Foundation last week and I asked them if we could get the grant money sooner than we had asked for. We had looked at next spring. And I got a call back from them and they are going to send us the full amount within the next 10 days. That would allow us to purchase the equipment that we need for the new cruiser and hopefully have that fully equipped and ready to go when the dog's ready. Perfect. Thank you.
And I may have asked, is there an acclimation period between handling the dog before the class? So when do you expect?
They told us, I think about a month-ish that Matt will get the dog and have a chance to.
Get a bet.
Yeah, yes. And hopefully the dog is a good fit and I've been assured that if it's not, they will rehome that dog and get us one that is. So it's about a month.
Chief, moving forward from here, what is the next step? Do you revise, set new goals? If so, what's the timeline?
As far as the plan?
Yeah.
So this plan is a three-year plan that doesn't expire until November of next year. So we're essentially ahead of schedule. Once this plan expires, I'll redo another one and update for another three years.
Great. Okay. Thank you.
I will just update you to receive the $10,000 donation last week from the project owner and that's what we're looking at.
Do you foresee the fire department doing the same sort of thing with this?
With the plan?
Yeah.
Yes, after we get a.
Good job, guys. Thank you.
Thank you.
Next item is Maine Water staffing for replacement of the retiring employee. There is a memo that Sue has and I see David's here.
The I did, the memo is on our website and I sent it to you today. We have the letter from Maine Water that indicates that if the, it was the council's wish that they could absorb adding the additional person into their contract for the same amount that our current budget allocates for that purpose. And they right now, the town budget's a total of $81,062 for that position, including wages, benefits and insurances. And although Mike has been with us for many years and has many years of experience, due to the very limited pool of candidates that are out there for these positions, I at a minimum, we would be required to compensate and have benefits in that range. But the benefits of turning this into a contract, totally contracted service are that it guarantees we'll always have staff positions for the operation of the plant regardless of vacation, sickness, et cetera, because that becomes part of the contractual requirement. It reduces the number of municipal employees by one, which reduces liability for workers comp and those other types of overall liabilities for the town. And it is consistent with the approach that we have taken to creating partnerships and contracts when appropriate instead of adding or retaining municipal positions. My recommendation is the council amend our contract with Maine Water for operation of the sewer treatment plant and collection system to include this position, which would then have the entire operation of that facility and collection system as a contract, as opposed to one employee and a contract, which we have at the moment. And our superintendent, Dave Misha, is here if anyone has questions about Maine Waters. And this is on this agenda because we need to, Mike is leaving in November. Hiring, advertising and hiring is going to happen regardless whether it's us doing it or Maine Water is doing, so.
This is here for discussion. If we bring it forward in our next meeting, we'll post these items as resolved. But does anybody have any questions tonight for Dave or any questions about the process? Certainly ask.
Under your present contract right now, I have, I have refreshed myself over. Do you maintain a person at the plant at this time?
Yes, we do.
You do? So this, you will have two people at the plant in this manner?
We have a four man staff so that if anything happens, we will place it takes, it's taken care of.
Right, thank you.
Any other questions?
But it changes nothing as far as the town's going to correct it. It just was swapping. It doesn't change money wise.
No, it doesn't change money-wise. It through this, it changes liabilities in that if someone is injured or something occurs that way, the contract is, the contractor is the one who's responsible for those things, not the town.
To your point, there will not be an increase in.
No, this is not a rate increase item. This is, their letter indicates that they can accomplish, they would accomplish this in the same amount of money that we have. And I guess the only thing I ask is that this, if there are objections to this or concerns about this, if I could hear them now before we prepare our resolve for this next time, only with the idea that if advertising for employees need to be done, we're, you know, two weeks out from another meeting and I want to make sure that if we head down a road that there's not a. So if anyone has concerns about this.
No, no issues.
Everyone, you know, will be put in on the next agenda, but there's general support for the idea of making this contracted. I think when this took over that we retained that one position so as not to this. This was back when it was primary treatment only and there wasn't the need for the second and we hired superintendent services and then built the big one and they required another operator and now we're down to not having that, so. Thank you.
All right. Next is replacement of filters at the Tinkham Pool.
Okay. You have an email in here from Mike Solinsky who has done all of the work at the pool other than what Wardwell did with the reconstruction of that wall and that excavation. And the media in the filter system was replaced as part of the work that was done two years ago on the pool, but the filters themselves were not replaced. And what has happened over the past couple of years is that the backlash that occurs to cycle through is only supposed to happen every so often. And what's happening is it's happening at a much more frequent, which indicates that the filters themselves are not operating the way they should be. I recognize that this is a big price tag. However, if we put it in perspective, the voters authorized $1 million to expense on this pool. And if we expend this money, we're at just about $200,000. And it's a, something that is the last piece of what was not done at the pool. And so my preference is to move this forward, get this stuff ordered, which is the same issue as every other thing you try and order, which is, you know, delays that I would like to have this ordered and done before the next pool season so that we don't end up starting at the pool and having a filter fail and then we're done for the season because we can't recover from it. As I said, when I asked Mike why we didn't do this at the beginning, he said, Susan, and we started talking about this was three years ago and these filters over the past two years have this frequency of dock washing has come up to where it's happening too often to ignore the fact that it could create a problem. The media that's there is usable again. They are fairly easy for access. He did, recently did another one in a pool where it was in a basement and extraction was really high and that was in the $70,000 range. So as I said, well, this is a higher price tag. I really think we should do this before we end up with another summer where we can't run the pool because the filters fail. Questions?
No objections.
No objections to this, but is this, is this something that's going to bring us up to where we're not going to look at another?
This is the last, this is the last piece, Council Morrison, that was not done in the overall of the pool. We lost hardly any water and virtually all of it could have been calculated to evaporation this year. Our lines are done, our pump is new, the quality, the clarity of the water is much higher. All of those, the part of the lines that connect the pool to other things, all of that's been redone. This is.
How often do these filters have to be changed?
They haven't been changed since the pool was built. Oh, I'm sorry. 50 years is.
50 years later. Thank you.
Anything else?
So that would be a resolve on the next.
Next item is the Hancock County Survey Premium Pay First Responders. I think everybody saw the proposal that was there.
The reason this is here is this is the criteria for what they're thinking about doing, which is a match for what a community might consider. But the town is required to respond to the survey by identifying how many full and part-time people we have, who would qualify under this so that they can calculate what their exposure would be financially. So it's not only how many people, it is in what amount would, might the community consider contributing? For Bucksport to be at the same level as what the county did for law enforcement and corrections, the Bucksport would have to commit $1,250 per full-time employee to get a two-to-one match, taking them to the $3,750 amount that county provided to each of its corrections people and each of its sheriff, all of its sheriff personnel. And so it doesn't require a voted commitment. It requires that, that we respond to them with an indication of what level the town might, so that they can calculate their greatest risk before making a decision. It doesn't bind the town to actually doing that. So I can certainly provide them with the list of fire EMS, police dispatch people that we have that would qualify under this. But my question to the council is, are you comfortable with me giving them an indication that if they move forward, the town might fund this at the $1,250 that made this consistent with what county law enforcement got? Understanding it's not binding, but it gives them a number to know what it might cost the county if they decided to do that. They have indicated that we don't, it doesn't have to be a vote, it needs to be an indication of, so they can do math to decide if it, if they move forward with it, this is what it would cost the county. And then it would be up to the communities to decide what or if they move forward with that after all.
What's the stipulation on part-time or do they have it? I mean, is like we have a long list of reserve?
We, we've treated that differently in that our, the people on our list that would be submitted are all people who actively worked a minimum number of hours during the pandemic. They weren't, these are not just people who are on a list. They're people who were, who actually actively worked during this. You know, a minimum of our part-time of like 20 hours a week, but it, it isn't. We talked about it as an organization that the purpose of this is for people who served in essential capacities who were more in harm's way, so to speak, than not. And being on a list isn't the same as being the ones who show up when the buzzer goes off, shall we say. And so that's our, the counties is not clear on what, you know, if you read this, it's sort of like who's on the list. We've not treated it that way.
I went out of town, as you know, and I didn't get that paper, so I haven't read it. So I don't know, like from the bottom, I don't know what, what is the money being given to them for or what?
One of the, one of the legitimate uses of the ARPA money is it's called premium pay or hazard pay for those who were considered to be frontline first responder types during this. That's a legitimate use. The county awarded all of their corrections and sheriffs people $3,750 in this premium pay category from ARPA money that the county got. They also gave $1,875 to people who were not frontline responders. That's not a discussion here, but what they've said is that if communities, they've asked for information for communities saying, how many first responders do you have, full and part-time, and what might the county, community have used of their own ARPA money as premium pay for those employees? Being the on-the-front-lines people during it.
Is this their, their full pay or just for time when they were responding to a COVID related?
This is just a, it's a, it's a stipend. It's a, it's a, it's.
It's a bonus pay.
It's a bonus. It's a bonus pay. And the amount of, if the town agreed to do it in order to, for these people to get the same amount of a bonus that the county sheriffs and corrections got, Bucksport would have to kick in $1,250 for a full-time employee, one shot, $1,250. And the county would match that two-to-one so that the employee actually got $3,750 the same way every county law enforcement officer or corrections person got. The reason being and that I went to the meeting when they were doing this is that it creates, in my mind, an inequitable situation. Law enforcement officers for the county weren't more at risk than our people. They weren't doing harder things than our people and the county has set this standard, which is why they are talking about perhaps providing some of their funding as an offset to what people might do for premium pay. But it's, it's, it's basically a bonus. It's one of the items under ARPA funding that's clearly identified. You don't have to try and. We're taking it on hold. It's identified as a legitimate use of the money. That's, that's what it is and why, but the, sort of the criteria the council, the county came up with.
Look, I understand that. Thank you.
Yep, Mr. Mar, just to make sure that I'm not assuming anything that isn't true, that we would fund this from our own ARPA funds or would we have to? Or how, how would that work?
What they're, they're asking is what amount of your ARPA funds?
Okay.
Were you going to designate towards this at what rate? If you remember, a long time ago, the council, the county said, we're going to give everybody $5,000, which was their original proposal. I had said to you that, I hoped that we would do $1,000 for each of our first responders who were full-time during this since they, you know, didn't get vacations. They didn't get, you know, we sort of kept them hostage for a period of time. And then the county proposed 5,000, ended up at 3,750 and that still creates the heartburn in terms of the value to the county of what law enforcement officers in Bucksport or in Southwest Harbor or in Bar Harbor or in Mount Desert who, if it were not for all of them, the county would be in big trouble because, you know, look at the number of responses that we have because the county can't get here quickly enough. We're in Orland or in other places. So anyway, the, the question I guess is in general, is the, is the council willing to tell the county that we would, we're considering using some form of ARPA money for this so they can calculate what or if they might use some of theirs to.
The only caveat I throw out there is we have a survey out there to our community. Part of that survey addresses this. And I don't think it's going to come in at number 50. But I would certainly, I don't want to presuppose we're doing something when we're, when we're asking a survey for everything else and then we're pulling these things out that are on the survey that we all of a sudden now decide is more important than something that is on the survey. So I would, I would just, I would caution that we make sure that we're consistent in how we're, in how we're administering these funds. I don't think, I, I personally don't think that it will, will come back that way, but I just, I would just play that word caution there.
But we're not committed.
No, you're not.
We're not. We can certainly tell them that yes, we are looking at doing something like this because we are. We've sent it out in the survey. I think that answers the question that they're asking.
Because they're, the responses are necessary to them by October 29th and we're not going to necessarily have enough or all of them back to be able to make a decision. But if, if what they're doing with this information is calculating money, it's not.
There's no commitment, there's no commitment at all on anybody.
No.
But I certainly don't want to lower the standard of our survey that we've set out that we decided we want to put on there. And this is one of the things that we want to put out there. But we also wanted to get the response from the folks that, that deal with us every day too. So I think answering the question, yes, we are looking into it and these are our numbers is more than sufficient to be able to give them, give them the answer.
I can tell you that the first few we've gotten back and we've started getting them back, people are bringing them in. The ones that I've seen all include this.
Oh, I'm sure. Like I say, I, I have no, no doubt that it's going to be there. I just want to make sure that we have a process in place that we want to follow that and not pigeon, you know, not cherry pick, you know, things that we, that we want to do without, where we've already sent this out as an idea, so.
So I can tell them that we are considering this as part of our survey. It doesn't commit you to doing it.
We're considering maximum.
Nope. I think all we have to tell is the numbers that they're looking for and the most that they will match is 2,500. So if we said that we want to give them all 2,500 on top of that, the county is not going to give it two-to-one to that 2,500.
Right, it's 1,250.
Correct, correct. So we could sit here and give these guys all $65,000 if we wanted to achieve. Oh, that's pretty years up, isn't it? So is everybody okay with at least sending that back with the answer that way to see where we're at? Thank you. Next on the agenda is the Helping Neighbors Program.
Okay.
Sue?
Yes. Well, at the last, we have these Bucksport area and network meetings with public safety and the homeless shelter and sometimes dummies committee partners and public health nursing. And once a month, we talk about issues that are before, that are of concern or, and one that consistently comes up and, and has been championed by Council Morrison on more than one occasion is the idea that we have seniors who need assistance with minor to major projects and we don't have a way to address that. And so at the last, we had a meeting and then a subcommittee meeting to talk about what we, could we do to to try and assess what kind of a volunteer pool we could put together. If we started with something. If we started with something, as it says in my memo, Saco has a neighbors, Helping Neighbors Program, that's all the time, and we're not ready to do that yet, we haven't mobilized any kind of assistance. And we're, so the, the idea would be, if the council didn't object, that we advertise for volunteers for a discrete time period, starting off in the spring and the fall, where, with a list of prescribed changing batters and smoke detectors, yard work, fixing windows, fixing a ramp, doing the kind of, putting in grab bars, those kind of things that seniors are having trouble locating people to do, is, and have this be an event that's a discrete number of days, spring and fall. Home has indicated they have maintenance staff that could assist with some of this for supervision and organization, and all those kind of things, on those kind of thing. But, and advertise for volunteers, and once we see what kind of volunteer group we pull, to then do a mailing to all our seniors, which we can do by the voter list, you know, that ages on that, in order to send out to see, number one, how many people have things, but these kind of things that need doing, and how many people would want assistance in doing them, and that whether it's ARPA money, or just general fund money, that, that the materials needed to do these things could be funded by the town. And this isn't everything everybody wants, but the goal is to start and see what we can build, because I think that if we get something established, that, that it could grow, and people might be more willing to devote, or to volunteer discreet amounts of time, at certain time, if they know that, if you give us two days here, or one day, that, that it's more manageable for people than it is otherwise. And it starts to address the smaller pieces of what people are, seniors are having a fine, hard time finding people to help them do. And so, as I said, it's, it's a small step, but it, it puts the ball on the court. It moves us forward from where we are now. Instead of just talking about this, we really look at what, what is the volunteer interest in this community, number one, and number two, once we know that, what is, who wants this? What people can we reach that need these kind of things? And it becomes a more acceptable thing if it's, if this goes to everybody, and people don't feel like they're being singled out or targeted. This is something that we would do for whoever says they needed it.
Questions?
That's, and so my question is, if it's okay if we advertise for volunteers for a program that looks something like this, to see what we can-
Yeah, sounds like a good place to start. If we're going to get people to do the work for us.
Yep, I'm certainly in favor, and, and I just mentioned it before, because I can see myself forgetting it, and I don't want to, I, one idea to perhaps add to this, and this may not be the time this evening to discuss this much, but you have a lot of high school students that still need to acquire 40 hours of volunteer work before they graduate. It might be a good thing to incorporate a program in there, where they could pick up some of that volunteer time. There are several classes at Bucksport High School that have been impacted by, you know, those volunteer opportunities have been fewer and further between because of the pandemic, so.
Maybe not install in safety.
Maybe not, but no, I was thinking more of the, a couple comas away, the rake leaves and do yard work, yep.
There were so many people that reached out to us to try and find people that do that, then.
So, I'm totally on board with that, I think it's great. Ultimately, does the town become the administrators of this, or is this something that we would?
That's a really good question, that's the network that we talked about, talking, talked about, where could, if we got something like this going, where could it live? And the question was whether, once this was, that Bucksport Bay Health and Communities could be, as a 501(c)(3), a good home for this, once it was installed. The administratively, it's a matter of, we, we funded a position for them, it's a part-time position, but-
This, this would become a program that would come here and ask for money, it's a question to you when you're giving out your community.
But, but it's got to get off the, it's got to get legs before it can walk, and-
Are we comfortable with the idea of at least putting the idea out there and seeing what we get?
Yes.
Couldn't you incorporate this with the fair that we talked about? Can do that a couple times a year, the volunteer fair that we-
Yeah, the, the idea that-
For all the, you know what I mean, for-
For everybody.
What we talked about beginning of the year.
Yep.
I would think it'd be a place to set up a booth, and see what kind of reaction you get.
All set?
I'm all set.
All right, thank you. Next is the Parade of Lights.
Okay, the, last year, our parade of lights was stationary, and it was beside the road. And in talking to staff this year, the preference is that our parade be a parade that's moving down the street, and not just beside the road with cars driving past. And so, before we start advertising, or promoting, or doing that, I'm asking the council if you support the parade going down the street, or you prefer the parade to sit next to the sidewalk.
Anybody want a stay parade, or do you want a parade? I say let's get moving. All right, I think we're all set on the parade.
Yes, please.
Okay, anything more, Rich? That's all we need.
Saturday, December 11, 6 p.m.
We just didn't know if it was going to move us until, what's the-
We're moving.
What's the question?
All right. Bay Festival.
Okay, there was no Bay Festival in 2020, due to COVID, and due to the fact that the Chamber is no longer in business, and the maritime heritage thing that was supposed to happen didn't happen either. And this year, there wasn't a Bay Festival, but that, that perhaps that maritime thing happened at about the same timeframe, and that covered it. The question is, no, the issue is, that there's nothing planned for the summer of '22 that approximates that kind of an event. And we don't have staff sufficient to plan and execute another thing, I, we just don't. However, there are a number of local groups, organizations, that might pick up a piece of it, if there were money to do this, because this costs money. If you're going to have events, if you're going to have entertainment, if you're going to, there's money associated with the need for that. So, the question is whether the council wants to look at bringing together a group of groups that divide this thing up, with the town providing funding, or the town wants to just step back and, and there not be one this year, because without funding, there isn't going to be one, because nobody has, no local groups have funding sufficient to support an activity of this magnitude.
Question?
I personally would like to see us, if we're going to give money, go towards three or four smaller events that draw people in, rather than throw everything into one festival.
I'd agree with Ed, you know, it may be over seasons instead of the height of summer, because that's not when, we have people in town, you know, in July, but June, September.
Rich, I was going to call you up here to get your take on this whole thing, please.
Yes, Jacob reminded me, and thank you. Terry was planning on doing a former Bay Festival. She was looking at July 2nd, 3rd, and 4th, the Saturday, Sunday, Monday, but there's no funding there. When she first came to the Economic Development Committee, she said, her words were, she wasn't going to come to the town seeking funding for events like this. But at the magnitude that the council has funded Bay Festival in the past, I don't see how logically that could happen.
Wouldn't you see, talking, you know, what Ed and Mark just talked about, about not one big thing, but trying to have a couple things, either, either groups or organizations around that would, could handle something on a smaller scale, say we had that same pot of money-
Yes.
Spread it across three or four different things.
I expect, dependent on where this variant goes, that Wednesdays on Main and Polackee may return. At one point, there was talk that it would merge with Main Street Bucksport, but the more and more I see that, if this takes a turn for the better, based off of some of the events that happened this year with the population, and that Bucksport was able to keep its part of it contained, that that'll happen. Main Street Bucksport, I believe, will be bringing back the Bridge the Gap Race, which hasn't happened in two years, so there are more events that are going to happen. What I would suggest is, towards the end of the Bay Festival, minus the year the council gave $45,000 to the Chamber to put on the 225th bash, the attendance at the Bay Festival has gone downhill. There were segments of the population that were excluded. The ship idea, though, the ship itself, the ship idea itself brought people from away. People like to see craftsmanship, they like to see, they like, it's an attraction. It's something they can see, it's something they can do. Something like that, I think, would bring more people to town. Not the same ship, not anything that represents the same thing, but a ship, maybe the state of Maine, or the Odin, or a tall ship from, the Tall Ship Collection from Rhode Island, or something like that. Something maybe different, but continue to do the events that happened this year that attracted people, and was, there was a wide array of events that did happen that attracted different segments of our population, whether it be the Crafters Weekend, the Pride Event, the, the Arts Festival. There were different things for different people, and the town did not have to put a penny into, really, any of these events. We didn't pay for that boat to be here, that boat was here, and that brought in more people than any of the last three or four Bay Festivals combined. The Arts Festival did very well without doing any advertising on TV this year. There were first-time events that had people that came to those as well. There were events that were here, didn't happen last year, came back, and businesses did well there, so.
Do you see groups out there that would want to continue that? Because as Sue says, staff cannot handle that. That is, that is, you know, it's unfortunate, but that's who we are. And, you know, to have these things, it's going to take resources, which, you know, I think this council has shown more than often than not, that we are willing to, to do that for those things that need it. But are there those there that are committed to bring these things back?
If it's an event for the community, by the community, with full community input, I think yes. But to do something because two or three people say, let's do it, it's going to fail. There were events that were going to happen that didn't happen, because people on social media said, oh, we're going to do this, we're going to do this, and those events that the council supported never happened. So as long as it's for the people, by the people, maybe it's through Bucksport next, or an organization that includes the group of the groups, then yes. But if it's something that the vocal minority speaking up, that they want to do, are they going to step up to the plate? And so far, for those type of events, those have not happened.
Yeah, my only point was, I'm just more in favor of giving money towards bringing in one, you know, one small niche, just like, just like you said. Instead of, I'm just, I think the Bay Festival is great, but I think it's running its course.
It has, and you, you have to reinvent the wheel. What brought, what brought the people before? The Navy ships. Well, I've pretty much tried unsuccessfully, or isn't there any, to get one of those here. What else? Cover bands like the Beatlemania brought in lots of people. If we go back to our roots, and do events that are community-based, community-oriented, based off of community heart and soul standards, I think those could be successful. It's got to be all-inclusive, it can't be for a certain segment, and, or their friends, and not for everybody else.
Who stands to benefit most by these gatherings?
When you, when you talk to the local business owners, certain events will benefit certain business owners over others, due to the natural causation of what it represents. For example, the Bridge the Gap Race benefits more the fryers, and that type niche versus a Huckleberries, let's say, okay? So, the Main Crafters Weekend was successful for the businesses who are craft-like. That would be Rowan and Wine Design, the Fryers, the Lighthouse Art Center, Protocol. So, the events themselves, when they're geared towards an industry, typically help benefit that industry. I will say during that event, that that day was probably the slowest I've seen Warren's Waterfront Restaurant this entire year, it did not benefit that segment.
How, how willing are these benefiting businesses, willing to fork open money for, to sponsor these events? Or do they have events of their own that they would rather sponsor?
The Main Craft Weekend, I did not sponsor through the economic development budget this year. Two years ago, I did, and I, I knew there was a segment that was left out, excluded, Main Street Bucksport picked up and took on that benefit there. To ask the businesses to sponsor a community-based event, I think their sponsorships and their money would be better spent on what they are doing. They provided advertising for events that they want to do. Some of the events they're looking at doing this winter are candy cane, and if someone here remembers better than I do, it's, it's a candy cane event that they want to do, they want to do the Small Business Weekend, they want to do Open House Weekend, and they're pulling their resources, their finances, their time to do that. We have to remember, we're dealing with not only a pandemic, but a worker shortage, and, you know, businesses that have been here 40-plus years, aren't able to be open seven days a week, aren't able to do lunches, aren't able to find the staff. So, not that the town needs to sponsor every single event, we just proved that we didn't have to help sponsor Main Crafters Weekend, and the event still happened. I think if we plan and execute, we can make a, and a good event happen. What is that? Community, community, by the community, for the community, is the answer.
So, wouldn't we, as the, as the people who control the money that belongs to the community, wouldn't it be more beneficial for us to give the things that they are willing to give to themselves? Businesses are willing to donate their monies to get these, these events going. Shouldn't, shouldn't that be where we should put our money, where they do? To help them in their benefit?
I see what you're saying, and I see where you're coming from. I'll use an example of this year. Local businesses have donated to the schools since the schools have been here. Schools ask the businesses to come through. This past year, when I broadcast the basketball games on, on, through the internet, the schools gave each of the businesses who, over the years, have sponsored them, they all got free sponsorships from the RSU 25, as a recognition, as a thank you for over the years being there for us. Fans weren't allowed at the games. So, as a give back for all the times that the local businesses in town contributed to the RSU, I think I did 16, I think I did almost 24 basketball games this year, and each game had a different business that was a sponsor that they didn't have to pay. So, short answer, yes, I mean, you, you can hold them to that standard, but I wouldn't say, okay, each business give us 100 bucks, and then turn around and say, hey, we want an ice cream vendor, pizza vendor, and all of that, and you really got to think outside the box. The more you have, don't think of it as competition, think of it as choices. So the more vendors you have that align, it, it's more that's going to bring different people here. People want to see different types of aspects, they want to see different things. They know what they can get on Main Street, but if they can get a burrito, a burrito down here in the waterfront, if they can find a wood shop vendor, and different things, when we did- When we did the Festival of the Forest, and I know the timing of it pretty much stunk because the mill closed the same year, but it brought in a different demographic, right? And people were able to take a tour of the mill, people were able to see woodworking. We had the North Main Woods Lodge folks here. It was something for everybody, it was a community event, for the community, by the community, and we didn't hire out an executive director. And prior to the 225, that was the last big event that we had because a staff person was the coordinator. And that staff person made a thousand dollars. The very next year, we paid someone fifteen thousand dollars for half the attendance. So I think it's gonna be someone who cares, that's why it's gonna be for the community, by the community, because we care.
And Jim, I think prior to, I don't know if I have words anymore, but, you know, I'll just take Bangor, for example. Bangor has a lonesome walnut, Bangor Savings, all these good organizations that have that arm that can go and donate to these things. When we're talking Friars or Bookstax or Protocol, I think it's tougher for them to, on the margins that these folks work on, to try to then all of a sudden contribute money to something that we're trying to drive businesses to them. I, you know, look at Bangor Savings, we have a Bangor Savings branch here in town. I would love to see Bangor Savings take some of the money that they put into some of these other communities and dump some of that down here in Bang, down here in Bucksport. I would, I would, I would think it would be easier, it's probably not the right word, but it would have a lot better taste if we've got those large, large companies that have those arms, that do those philanthropy and those type of things, than trying to go to our small, single-shop businesses that are, that are really, truly trying to get by daily.
Our goal with these festivals or events is to bring business into town for these business owners. That's, that's our goal, is to boost their businesses so that they're comfortable being a business in Bucksport.
Correct.
I assume.
Yeah, it is, but I think part of it, and I'm just speaking from where, from where I see it, is that they are, there is one Bookstax, there's not a Bookstax chain. So when, when he's selling books to those people that's coming to town, if he's taking, you know, he makes five hundred dollars from selling books that day, and I'm just taking a number, but he's taking a hundred and fifty or two hundred dollars of that to try to get the folks in there on the hope that they're gonna come in there. And I think part of it, and that's a decision we have to make. Do we want to be the community that is gonna help, like we've helped in the past and continue to help the businesses that are here? Or are we gonna put it back on their shoulders to try to bring in their own business when they're spending money on the advertising and other things that they have to do? So I think that, that is, that is a philosophical question that we have to try to answer ourselves.
Mr. Mayor, I appreciate you bringing up that philosophical piece, because to me, I think, there's just one counsel that's pretty clear. When you look at the last 10 years here in Bucksport, especially since the mills closed, and you, and you have a business anywhere in this town, they made a decision on, basically one of two decisions. They decided to stay open after the mill closed and not bail out of Bucksport. Or they made a decision to open since the mill closed and bet on Bucksport. And I think if we're gonna make a philosophical decision, it needs to be predicated on that. That, I'm not saying that, I agree with many of the ideas presented here, especially around maybe not doing a Bay Festival, but there is a, I'll tread up to the line of saying there's a responsibility here to make sure that we do this correctly, and we have our philosophy in order on that.
And part of the goal is to not just bring people for that day, but to bring them here and hope that they return here.
Right.
And I also think, keep in mind, it's not just for business, I'd like to think it's to keep the waterfront community alive, to keep people, just to have a fun event to draw people in, to entice them that this is a great community.
And to talk, and I think it's, I think it's, I think it's fair to ask for donation, but it doesn't have to be monetary, it could be volunteers, that's just as good as monetary. It could be goods or services as well. So not asking them, I think, would be an insult to them, but I think predating that, hey, if we're gonna do this event, we're gonna chip in, you have to chip in.
No.
I don't, I don't necessarily think that's the right way to go, maybe I misunderstood, but, okay.
No, no, I was saying that find the events that they want to sponsor, that they want to work with, and add our money into theirs, and make the pool bigger.
Yeah, that's typically how it works, so yes, I'm sorry, I misunderstood, but yes, typically, that's how it does work. Sometimes, like, financial institutions all won't, like, you may not find Camden, Bangor Savings, and Seaboard sponsoring the same event, because one wants their logo bigger on the banner, or they want it as their event. And I can speak from experience in reference to that. Not that I would have wanted it that way, but that's how the financial industry, and those are your typical, your bigger sponsors in this town because of that. But it's not lost, yes, that's true. Seaboard is the big sponsor for, for the Art Festival, but that Art Festival doesn't happen if, you know, Catherine James, Lighthouse Art Center, doesn't get involved as well, as, you know, as Meg Key's business, as Joyce Greco's business. Yes, right, I think it's an insult if you don't ask people, but I also, and now understanding, I agree with you, Jim, yes.
So, looking at the Bay Festival, I'm a bit sad that we wanted, like, we were talking about not having it, but I also think it is revolved around the event that's actually happening, because the Beetle Mania thing was awesome. I don't know if you guys went to it, it was incredible show. I remember it like yesterday, because it was such an awesome show. So I think a lot of this is gonna come down to what we're actually bringing in, and how big it's gonna be with what we're bringing in. So I think even as the events come up, and I know we're talking like, well, money, and what are we doing to, are we gonna do this? I think it's gonna be a case-by-case as things come in.
And the best ideas may come from the business owners, are likely going to come from the business owners, I don't know that that's...
Ultimately, all those things, the town people, the business owners, and you brought up Bookstax. I mean, the things that he already does for the community are pretty amazing, when it comes to the teacher books and other things like that, so.
Rich, do you see any benefit maybe to bringing in Main Street Bucksport and seeing what their capacity is? You know, because that's the only organization we have in that realm.
I don't, I don't see that, I don't see that, I think, and I have to apologize, I haven't been to very many Bucksport Next meetings lately. I know they just had one recently, and I was preoccupied, but I think that's where all your groups lie. All of you volunteers are there, all of your groups are at that meeting. I think that's where you start. Because again, if it's for the community, by the community, you're gonna have more success. It's when we live in silos, it's why we're good at what we do as a town. You guys are all good because you allow us to form these partnerships. The mill site didn't fix itself, it's partnerships. You allowed us and granted us the opportunity, that's why it did what it did, that's why this town is where it's at, so.
So would there be any, this is really helpful, because this kind of, for me... It is helpful, because this, I've not heard one of you say, "Let's pour all our eggs in this basket for the summer." Nobody has said, "Let's just shoot for the one big thing." I've heard a lot of various things, and so my proposal is the Bucksport Next meets quarterly, and it's got, would have a meeting coming up shortly, that we look to have this be a topic that the groups there to see what their plans are for, you know, for what they're doing, or what they plan to do in terms of, are they gonna repeat things they've done this year? Are they, you know, is the Art Festival coming back, is the Pride Festival coming back? Is, what, you know, let's find out what's already in, I mean, we had Bill Foster, who was going to do the...
Tim Samuel.
At the Performing Arts Center, that was a, that was a, for the whole community kind of event, being promoted that way. And every one of those is a piece in the puzzle of getting more people here and seeing who we are. So is there any objections if we suggest that the next, that this next, Bucksport Next meeting, have this be the agenda item, so that we can sort of look at what is already in the works for these organizations? And then see what pieces might be missing that we could look to encourage?
And I know when we talk about the Festival and run its course, I see a lot of people shaking their head that have been here for the 20-plus years, and, you know...
I'll just, if I could, real quick, I think I've been here since the first one to the last one, and it has kind of run its course, and from a public safety standpoint, watching the number of people coming to town. One of the first years we had it, and we've had it two or three times with Navy ships, there were lines for miles down the walkway to get onto there for hours at a time. Beetle Mania was huge. So it really went from starting out and what you bring people to the town, to the event, the big event that was gonna go with the festival, to the end of it, where everyone just came at the end of it for the fireworks. So I think whatever they do, it should have a big event with it, like Navy ships or Beetle Mania, so that's the way I've seen it change over the years, so.
They also incorporated, like, softball tournaments, it'd be 16, 18 teams from Hancock.
From all over the county, yeah.
Wrestling tournaments, and football.
Yeah.
Okay. Are we okay with that idea of bringing that and see where we stand?
Absolutely.
Sounds good, good conversation, thank you all. Next is private parking lot easement, I assume, Rich, you're gonna talk on this one?
Hi, well, this is being brought in front of you tonight from a recommendation from the Community and Economic Development Committee. And this was brought up because there are certain properties in town where we have parking lot agreements. But it is unclear, it's been made a little bit more clear recently, but it's unclear what happens when those lots sell, what happens when Masonic Hall sells, what happens when Community Pharmacy's lot sells. It then takes away needed public parking for the town. So the committee's recommendation, and unanimous recommendation, was to ask the council to shore up these agreements in the form of easements.
Questions? Albert Brand stands, what he's, what he's talking about is that if these places sell, we're basically on the hook that we won't, we are possibly losing those because of the way we're written, right?
Correct.
You're gonna take that, and somebody's gonna take it and run with it?
Yes.
Any questions on that? That's, I hope we can get that cleared up, so. I'd like to take up an item not on the agenda, we get a motion, please? Motion to take up an item not on the agenda?
Second.
All those in favor? Opposed? Next item is under discussion, is about the sale of the floats, Rich?
Yes, and thank you. So as you may recall, the town changed the setup of the fishing pier with docks. We now have a fishing pier that is longer and wider and is brand-new. It's used for fishing, but also people congregate there, they take photos, it's a great spot to be over the water, we have good views of the, of the fort. So anyway, we had four wooden floats that were, that are hanging out up at the town garage, not doing anything, and we had a gangway. I put minimum bids on everything with the hopes that if we collected it all, it would have made up for the loss that insurance didn't cover on one of the broken floats. I aimed high on the gangway and didn't get any bids, so for that, I apologize. I will put that out to bid with no minimum bid requirement, maybe we'll gain some interest, and maybe we'll get even higher than what we were looking for. But the wooden floats, I put a minimum bid of $1,000, and we did receive one bid back. That totaled $1,669.98 from Michael Jakes. So that you know, I did put a stipulation that all items need to be picked up by the high bidder, the town will not deliver the items. So there's no extra cost to the town, it's surplus, it's hanging out in our field, and it'd be nice to have this accepted, if you will.
We'll resolve for that next meeting, then, is that right, or can we do that now?
You can do that now, that's okay.
Okay. Any questions? All those in favor? Opposed? I give some for the gangway, will you? Alrighty, good discussion, folks, thank you. Next is agenda items, we have none? Waiting till our next one?
You will.
Just wait till next one.
Resignations, appointments, and assignments, and elections. First is appoint Jacob Grand for the warden on 11-2, 2021, for the election. So moved?
Second.
All those in favor? Opposed, congratulations, Jake. The next is a signed warrant for the 11-2, 2021 election. I agree that's going around for signature. Next item is approval of quit claims and discharges of bees, we have none, town manager and department have reports.
Okay, the end of the Marina season is tomorrow, the 15th. It has been a great year at the Marina, and bookings are already nearly full for seasonal slips for the 2022 year. We look forward to the new floats that are being built for the facility and another great year ahead, and many thanks to Rich and Mike and Bill and Jeff for their hard work this summer. It was, they did a great job, and people were very happy. Also, our first year as a scheduled stop for American Cruise Line has been extremely successful. The company is very happy with its visits here this year and looks forward to having Bucksport as a scheduled stop next year as well. And Park Street, good progress is being made on the Park Street development. Paving has been done on the Broadway extension and the extension of Park Street itself, and we look forward to continued work to complete this road and the site plan approved by the planning board. Staff has a meeting next week to discuss where this stands and what the forward motion on it looks to be. Meet Your Candidates Night for the Town Council and the School Board will be held on Tuesday, October 19th, at Brown Hall at 31 Elm Street, from 7:15 to 8:45 PM. It will be moderated by Dr. Stephen York, and you can attend in person, or it will be aired live on the Congregational Church YouTube channel, which you can access by clicking on the link on the front page of the town's website at bucksportmain.gov, or from the notice that we also posted on our Facebook page. This is a great opportunity to hear the views of the candidates on issues facing Bucksport and RSU 25. There has been an uptick in graffiti at Ian's Playground, and RSU 25 in the town are checking to see if cameras near that location have captured any of it, and if not, will be installing camera or cameras so that we can put a halt to that behavior. Our walls project, for anyone who's been through the downtown, is close to being wrapped up for the installation of the walls. The paving and curving and that kind of stuff will come afterwards, but we've had nothing but positives on the installation of those walls.
There are folks that live in other towns that are just like, "I want those in our town." That's nice job, so those have to learn.
And I'll let Rich, when he gets up, talk about more of the details of that. And finally, I will be out of the office next week on a staycation. As always, however, I will be as close as the phone, email, text, et cetera, if anybody needs anything.
Very good, any questions? The other thing I just wanted to add, and I thought you might add it, but I noticed on our Facebook page, there's a link to a contest that we seem to be doing very well in.
USA Today.
Those little ones there that don't get, have a lot of reach, but a lot of it was based on the folks that were here that wrote the article. And they present, I assume they're the ones that presented Bucksport to that, to that contest?
They nominated us, we're one of the 10, the 20, and the, the voting runs through October 25th. You can vote every day. At the present time, Bucksport is leading in the voting for the coastal community in the country. There were 20 categories, and we're up against the likes of the Cape May New Jerseys and those which are...
And Kennebunkport.
Kennebunkport, and the much more established... But we are at number one, and Deb Phallows, who was here as part of that visit, sits on the Board of Advisors of that group, and was, we were her nomination for that in the country. And this is a woman who, with her husband, traveled more than 100,000 miles to many, many, many communities in the United States, wrote a book called Our Town, and her, her nomination of us was based on the community that she found here, which is, I thought was...
Pretty cool.
Pretty awesome, and so... And, um, so once a week, I give Facebook a nudge and say, hello, it's me again. I used to voting. Please share this with all of your friends and even people you don't like. But we are thus far leading that. And, and even though it's a, there's no monetary prize associated with it or that kind of thing, it's exposure. This is a national publication. It's a national, you know, the people that read this. And talking to the cruise line people today, I told them about it and they said that, you know, people that go on our cruises look for these kind of things about where we go and that kind of thing. So it's, it's one more piece in the puzzle of getting people interested in looking at our community. And I am thrilled that we have enough people voting that we're still, emptying days, two weeks into this, we're still vote leading.
Yeah, I think it's, it's really impressive and you can't, I don't know that you could pay for that kind of advertising. If somebody were to, when this contest is completed, Buck Sport stays in, at the top of the leaderboard. I mean, when people Google search Buck Sport, that's going to come up and then people are going to click that link and see that of the twenty towns on that list, including towns in Hawaii, et cetera, et cetera, that Buck Sport took.
And Kennebunkport.
And Kennebunkport. Yeah, it might get people to drive a couple hundred miles past Kennebunkport. So yeah, I think that's, I think, yeah, there's not an award perhaps associated with it, but I think it's a great thing. That's right.
Rich, do you want to present now or do you want to wait? It's a department report, so why don't you go ahead and get it out of the way?
Okay. You have my report. I just, I really want to expand on, on the walls. Not the easy part, but I mean, it's a lot of work when you get a grant. But the work that these folks are doing is just incredible. And the property owners alone are so thrilled with these folks that it's, Sue's getting all the feedback from them. When certain things came up, I'd call the owners and they said, whatever those people want, you let them have. And, you know, at Ming's Garden, for example, you see from, uh, Dino Kismetakis, owner of Buck Sport House of Pizza, owns the apartment building adjacent to Ming's Garden. And you see that his has already been seeded, hydroseeded and everything, but nothing's been done on the Ming side behind the wall. The, the stones there, but granite curbing is being installed there. That was part of the original bid. So it doesn't cost us anything extra. It was actually cheaper than an asphalt curb and it's going to look a lot better. So there are a few more pieces that'll need to be done. The curbing will be in tomorrow. The project's going to come in over, depending on our engineers' continued cost. But we'll come in under a hundred thousand dollars, over a hundred thousand dollars, under budget, two weeks early. Minus the paving. So, um, the paving didn't happen all at one point, uh, point because of tonnage and cost and every, it made sense to have everything all at once. And it'll be done before the snow flies. And I'm sorry not to knock on that.
No, but I mean, I, like I said, I've heard nothing, you know, from folks that live in other towns that have come through and seen that. Even though it's not, it's just, they're like, wow.
It's a good first impression into Buck Sport versus what we had previously. Now, then it's continued to work. As Sue pointed out earlier in her report, we have not stopped. You have not allowed us to stop. You've allowed us to continue with these projects and it's, they're not going. I noticed there were folks today from South Carolina and Indiana that I met on the walkway and they're just impressed and people do work during a pandemic. Municipalities, to them apparently, shut down during a pandemic, but that's not what's being, and I know you guys may hear it or you may not, but it's, that's what's being parlayed back to us is that this little town that could, is, and is doing. And Kathy, on a side note, um, the contractors really appreciate when you tell them good job when they see you. They say, the counselor in the white truck. So, um, again, they appreciate all of your support as well. And I'm sure some of you, I think, Dan, I think you've talked to them once before as well, and some of you may have as well. They, they just let me know. They are thrilled to work here. They've done the fishing pier, they've done the town dock, they're doing the Marina floats. They won the wall bid. They want to know when we'll put more work out to bid. So I just want to say kudos to them. And, and the hardworking folks at Hardscrabble are putting those walls together, together, so. And hiring everyone local. Gene Bass did the hydro seeding, the stones coming local, the builders are local. Um, it's just been, it's been a great experience.
Is there any, with the hundred thousand dollars that we have left, give or take, it's estimated that we would have enough to do, out of what's already budgeted and already approved, the two additional walls on Central Street that aren't done. Is there any objection to Rich checking with DOT if they will allow us?
To expend those funds on that?
To expend those funds on those two walls. Other, otherwise it's, it's another application in order to, to do it. And if we could, if that, we don't have to re-mobilize, we save a huge amount of money because it's just construction cost instead of admin. And it was, it was granted to us and it was approved locally for the match.
Send them the survey results. We're the number one town in the nation.
And if I could just send them my report, instead of saving it for the variants, I know everyone wants to go home. Uh, two more events are happening, since we spoke about events earlier. School sport is Saturday, the twenty-third, from ten to ten. Paranormal parade, food and craft vendors, ghost stories, trunk or treat, Halloween dance, games and activities. And I believe that they work in conjunction with the Old and Community Center for Dance. Um, and then haunted stories on the hill, a night of supernatural stories from Buck Sport and beyond. Open mic, share your story, prizes for the best stories. This is going to be on the lawn of Wilson Hall, thirty-four Middle, uh, Middle Street in Buck Sport. That is Friday, October twenty ninth at six PM. Bring your own chair. There's parking at the Reed School and on, and on the street. Free admission, donations are accepted, and they'll be going to the Buck Memorial Library. Uh, free donuts, popcorn, cider, masks are encouraged. Uh, you can visit the Facebook page, facebook.com backslash haunted bucksport for more info. The ring date is October thirtieth. Uh, there is a warning, uh, this is an all ages event, but is not recommended for those who are sensitive to ghosts, monsters, violence, and scary stuff. A bathroom is on site. Thank you for your time tonight.
All right. Uh, next item is public hearings. So the first public hearing is the amendment to Appendix B, Council Rules to Update Membership on Economic Development Committee. Public hearing is open. Comments? Close that public hearing. All those in favor? Opposed? Motion passes. Open up the next public hearing. The amendment to Appendix P, Remote Participation Policy to Provide Definition of Boards and Committees Covered. Comments? Close that public hearing. All those in favor? Opposed? Motion passes. Next public hearing is open. Amendment to Chapter Eight, Offenses and Miscellaneous, Article Two, Safe Zones to Update Safe Zone Locations. Comments? Close that public hearing. All those in favor? Motion passes. Open up the last public hearing. Amendment to Chapter Four, Boards, Commissions, and Special Offices to amend meaning requirements for the planning board. Comments? Questions? Public hearing is closed. All those in favor? Uh, I'd like to add a, get a motion to add another item not on the agenda. Motion to add an, add an item not on the agenda.
Second.
All those in favor? Opposed? We have a poll permit request. For, uh, proposed power line bill on the town farm road. Any questions? Comments? All those in favor? Opposed? Passes. All right. The next is items under discussion, items for discussion not on the agenda for the council and the public. Anybody from the public have anything they want to talk about tonight? It's all on the agenda. Can you come right up, please? Thanks. Just name and please.
The $200,000 for that filter?
No, $50,000 for the filter. We, 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 $200,000 for the total pool project.
Oh, I was under the impression it was $200,000.
No, no, no. The filters are, the filter project is fifty-eight. If we spend that, the total amount spent to rehab that pool is $200,000 instead of the million that was.
Thanks for asking, though.
Because you said it was a big, big expense, I guess. The second question, uh, the, I know this is not really, you sent the survey out about the historical vapor barrier. Was there any specifics on what they're going to do for vapor barrier?
Rich? I don't think so, no. I think, I think that's sort of.
It wasn't in the past, there was some talk about putting it on a foundation or something?
Yeah, so as soon as, as soon as you're done talking, I'm going to talk about something.
Anybody else in the public? Anybody from the council have anything?
I just had a question for Chief Winchester. How is the, uh, up by Miles Lane radar? How long do you plan to have that there and how do you think it's helping?
I believe it's helping because you can see it immediately as you turn on Miles Lane. And, uh, unless it's needed somewhere else, and I don't know, as we have a more needed spot than Miles Lane, I'm prepared to leave it there as long as we need it.
Would it be beneficial to put a permanent one, full mounted like solar?
If, if we had access to one, if we could get one, yeah, I think it'd be a great spot.
Anywhere we can get, even get a price on that?
Yes.
And my other question was, camera wise, what do we have up by the school system? Out on the street area, around the ball fields?
None.
Nothing?
Nope.
All right. I just, I'd like to see us look into that in the future. Give them some eyes on that whole area.
Do you know the cost of the one on Main Street?
Uh, we got both of those free through DOT and I'm thinking right around five thousand.
You're talking about for the speed signs?
Yeah.
Fifty-five hundred, I think, is what they are.
Yeah, the solar one.
Yeah.
We've got one down the testing.
Yeah.
We can move those and technically we're probably supposed to, but I put one coming in on both ends of town because we have so many complaints on Main Street, trucks and stuff like that, so I'd not move them. If we had a pole, we could move those. But it would make sense to have a permanent one in that area. We have talked about putting them on Broadway also, but it is a cost issue. They're, they're expensive. They weren't very well.
And there may be another grant coming up. I, I've heard that there may be another grant coming up for that program.
Yeah, and we, we were only supposed to get one. And I put in for another one and they said, we already got one. And I said, well, if you got extra, you're saying, I ended up doing two drains on the steam, so I can get two. But there should be, you know, coming out soon.
I could probably stretch it for the MMA safety grant as well. I mean, with the safety issues we've had on Miles Lane with what we've addressed, um, that may fit. So I could apply for that, for that reason.
The cameras is definitely something, I don't, I don't know if that's something you guys would price out or.
Depends where they go. I mean, if it's on school property looking out and be the school, if it's on the street or around the fields, then it would be us.
It would be, we contract IT with the school, so it would be through Jim Morrow that we would look at. And Jim's someone that was looking to see where the existing cameras actually saw to see if any of that area was, where the graffiti had been happening was covered. With the idea that there should be eyes in that area anyway because it's playground.
No, that, if we put them on the road, we could tie that into the police station, right? Like the waterfront?
That's a technical question, Jim, and there's a lot to that. As far as even tying the waterfront ones in, there's a lot, a lot that goes to it. So it's very expensive. I was, I met with him last night in dispatch and I think at this point we've got a better part of $40,000 into the camera system, which is great, but we have to connect certain areas and have power in certain areas and connect it back through the router, back to the state is, is quite complex. But it can be done, but it's a matter of equipment, money, and technology.
On what, yeah, so.
An overall idea of, of sort of, instead of picking and choosing, if we took, take a holistic look at what you want cameras on and then look at what that would look like for cost rather than.
Pick and choosing.
Picking and choosing, you know, is that, is the playground, is the ball field, is the tennis courts, if we fix those? Is the ice skating, you know, what, where, where and what are we?
Ideally, everything.
If money was no object, yeah, well, money may be an object.
We may be able to do power and technology through the schools and route at that, but that's.
Then the other should become storage because we only can house so much data for so long.
Right.
So that's an issue we're facing.
We may be a capacity that is going to have the one, the system inside the state.
How, how effective are those, uh, speed signs working right now? Are you finding less complaints or?
Since we put the speed trailer up on Miles Lane, I've noticed a significant, but of course, we have flooded the school zone with cruisers too, so that helps. But.
I'm, I'm, that's why, yeah, because I've noticed it.
Yeah.
And I think a permanent one would be a great thing.
And I believe we've had last complaints on Main Street. I'm not saying not on speeding on Main Street.
I slow down every time I drive by that thing. It's because it blinks if you want to. It alerts us and just.
I would just, as somebody who's up near the soccer field, um, a lot lately, put a plug in for the soccer teams. We've got some good soccer teams here. Um, I have noticed this year, after this is year four with my son, the traffic through there has been much better now. I also think that the, some of the games are, are later now because of the lights, so that has helped. But I would agree with you, Chief, that between that and as well as every game, I see a cruiser go by at least once, but it's usually more than that. I, that is a much improved area there as opposed to certainly four years ago where it was, yeah, you wanted to get there early, you wanted to get a parking space and you did not want to have to cross the road if you didn't have to.
Right. We certainly do not want to replay what happened earlier this year, so.
Anything else?
Thank you.
Thank you.
Anybody else have anything?
I'm Randy Hawking and live up on Duck Cove Road. And I understand you're going to make some changes to Duck Cove Road. Do you know what you're going to do?
I am still looking into that. I have the data. And I'm not sure at this point that the data is going to tell us that we should change that.
Okay. My wife got TiVo now, that's why I was asking. But the thing is, if, if, if the accidents have happened, is people trying to get up that road?
I believe it would be more coming off the road, onto the road, but in the last five years, there have been two accidents here. And I was thinking about closing, shutting that end down and going down to the four way. And there's been all the accidents down there, including. If we put more down to the, the four way, there have been more accidents at the four way than they have done at.
Right, right. So if you made the four way one way, just going down, would that help?
Um.
That would make everybody have to go around.
Tough to force, and I don't like that intersection at all, but going by what the data.
I always walk around five, six times before I go across the area.
Yeah. But I will give a report.
Yeah, DOT was up there today.
Coming down from Helen Moore's old house?
Okay.
Yep.
Lines at the intersections.
The one that sucks is that.
There's a turn, there's a stop there.
So it's like, it's this, I'm in forty seconds, it's this one right here. That one, Russell Hill. That one I hate. I hate this one here because you've got that line coming.
And the problem is that I'm not disputing that, is the near misses, the things that you don't see. Um, those are the ones that, that puts on people that, you know, I can't look at the intersection and may have someone else, you know. Unfortunately, those don't get seen, though, when we're looking at how you have to enforce these and how you have to make changes. You have to look at that data and what it says, so.
Is it possible with road signage, in, in some places that I've been approaching these kind of intersections? Is it possible with road signage, in some places that I've been approaching these kind of intersections, you get, you have paint on the road that's significant?
A lot, a lot of times what happens is those people are on their phones, they're not paying attention to any of the stuff. I mean, and I think you'll find a lot of these are local folks anyway that know the roads. You know, that's...
And we had the same issue, if you remember coming out Milldale Road years ago. That used to be a sweeping turn and we had multiple accidents. We put it to a T intersection and it's basically gone away. And I don't know of any way at that intersection, if there was a way to put a T intersection, I'd recommend it.
Right.
It's kind of like this, a little turn, it's just not a good intersection, but...
Anybody else have anything else? The only other thing I wanted to talk about and to Ralph's point was the historical building. Hit me today and I don't, I just want to put it out there as a thought. We've got a piece of property over here we've been trying to sell for, seems like 20 years. I don't know how long it's actually been for sale. But what would be the hurt in looking at what it would cost to move that historical building up to Main Street? And then we've talked a couple years ago about lifting it up and putting it on Main Street, but we've got a lot that, you know, I don't see us moving unless Rich has got some secret people that are looking to buy it for...
It's too secret.
So I've been working with the four main industry. The former mill towns, we're all granted, at no cost to the towns, just a wee bit of my time and a few members of the community. What was required was someone who worked in real estate, a former member of the town council and someone who worked in the financial services industry. So that's myself, former mayor Keen, George McLeod and Adele Simpson. We, this summer, dear folks came out and did a feasibility study on the site. Because we're having these ideas presented to the council where people either want money to do that or they have these ideas that then at the grand scheme of things, when they go to do the work, it can't be done. So I have seen the preliminary report. I have, I don't have access to it. They have not shared it with me. They do want to present it to the town council. I, they did not get information from me on the ideas they came up with. I personally like the idea very much. I think it's different, it's outside the box, it's not what we looked at and I don't think it's anything anyone here would expect to get from this report. With that said, I've also been approached by someone about the property, and this was just this week, about commercial, two storefronts with apartments up above as well, which is what, the typical, what we've been hearing. And they want to know that if they just pay the $110,000 asking price, then do they have to go to the council because this is what you're saying you want for it? I'm going to give you this. And I still said that the town still owns it and yes, it does have to go to the town council and I recommend a full business plan. And I thought it was crossed because the town has the right to refuse any and all offers. So there are things in the works and I do understand about the historical society because something needs to be done. There's other stuff on the waterfront, as we all know, that needs to be done as well. And instead of doing bits and pieces, if it's all can be done at once, I know we had that big plan done, but we can take pieces from that plan and work on it. We have the outline of what we can do and that could be an idea of putting that there. But what's it mean for the rest of the lot? And if you see this other idea, it may parlay on what you're saying.
Alright. See, I got something out of you, that's all I... Alright, so to answer your question, it's still in the works, how's that? Anybody else, anything else? Alright, do we have any committee assignments we haven't set up or anything, or? Nope, I think we're, oh, Rich?
Community redevelopment is meeting this Monday at 6:00 PM. If you would like to attend, there are going to be some numbers shared that I think might be eye opening. The public committee already has that information, but I have taxable sales data over the last 10 years for the town of Buck Gore and then over the last three years on a monthly basis for the ESA, which is the Ellsworth service area which Buck Gore lies. You'll find good information regarding lodging, restaurants, retail. I think it's eye opening. There's a lot of stuff we'll have on this agenda, so...
And just as an FYI, that is also broadcast on our channel and on the town hall screen, so... Anything else? Alright, good meeting tonight. Thank everybody. 15's adjournment.
Let's do adjourn.
All those in favor, have a good night.